Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for our Monday, October 28th, 2013. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next is approval of the minutes for the October 7th, 2013 minutes.
Motion.
Seconded.
Also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. Is there anybody here who'd like to address the board who's not otherwise scheduled? Not seeing anyone at all will go on to the public hearings and scheduled appointments. First item on the agenda is Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill for a liquor violation. Go ahead, step up to the microphone, sit down right there. A notice was provided to Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill. The notice states that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing pursuant to general law, Chapter 138, Section 64 and other applicable laws at 7:00 PM, Room 3 of the Town Hall, October 28th, which the hearing, Board of Selectmen will consider whether or not to modify, suspend the license issued for your establishment pursuant to said Chapter 138. The reason for the contemplated action is that on September 20th, at or about 9:27 PM, an employee or agent of your establishment did sell alcoholic beverage to a minor without any inquiry as to the identification, all violations of the law of the Commonwealth and rules and regulations related to the sale of, I'm sorry, all in violation of the laws of Commonwealth, rules and regulations related to the sale of alcoholic beverage. We advise you have the right to attend the hearing, to present your evidence on your behalf, and to be represented by counsel. And Tom, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna ask you to read from your report to the Board of Selectmen regarding the violation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, on September 20th, 2013, Detective Tony Canaro and Detective Carlos Souza, along with an underage operative, went to 36 establishments within the town and conducted an alcohol compliance check. At 9:27 PM, a 20-year-old male operative went to Applebee's Restaurant, ordered a 16-ounce bottle of Budweiser Light Beer from the bartender. About asking for identification, the bartender served the underage operative the alcoholic beverage and charged him $3.50. The detectives entered the premises and identified the bartender. They then notified the manager that there was a violation and that a letter of compliance would be sent to the Board of Selectmen.
All right, and this was a, I just wanna make sure I have it right, Chief. Was this consistent with our ongoing and your ongoing policy as it relates to communication, public notice?
Yes. So, the, prior to doing the check, yes, we issued out a press release to all the local media. I do have copies of the print articles here.
Letting them know you would be doing compliance checks.
Correct, that's correct.
All right, and of the establishments you checked, how many passed and?
Thirty-five passed.
Thirty-five out of?
Applebee's was the only one out of violation.
Thirty-five out of 36. Okay, and we have a representative, if you would, for the record, just state your name and your title.
Yes, we are, General Manager.
Okay, and any comments or thoughts as it related to the issue that evening?
Well, I mean, it was an issue where she was clearly guilty. She did not ask for ID. We, you know, I brought evidence here. We have service safe alcohol training and responsible service of alcohol training for all my staff. We never had any instances like this before. It was just a fluke that she wasn't thinking, she was busy, and she just didn't card the gentleman, and she was wrong, and we terminated her as a result of it.
I see. And it does say, by the way, on the notice that the Board received, that this is the first violation of Applebee's location. All right, I appreciate your candor and your explanation of the events that evening. I'll now go to the Board members and see if they have any questions or comments. Dean?
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. I think you were a little bit fortunate tonight because I think later on in the agenda, the Board's probably gonna, for the past several years, we've been issuing a letter of warning to be placed in the file, but I think after tonight, we're gonna change that policy and the first time would probably be a one-day suspension, so I think you were lucky coming in before we changed the bylaw, but.
I guess I was.
As long, as long as you understand and, you know, the Board's trying to be consistent and work with the Police Department and all that, is, that's what happens when I guess we don't pay attention.
Yeah, it's an unfortunate thing, and, you know, unfortunately, I lost a, one of, you know, a good staff member and a seasoned employee for not thinking, and that's all it was.
Yeah.
So, we are conscious about it. Like I said, we've never had any issues before.
Yeah.
All my staff is certified in both areas, responsible service of alcohol training and service safe alcohol training, which is approved by the NRA, so.
Sure. Okay, we're sorry, yeah, that's almost Jim.
Okay, Brian?
How long had this woman worked for you?
At that location, for five years. She also worked for me in Franklin for a period of almost two years.
So, you terminated it just over one incident?
It's company policy that we do that. We're now owned by Apple American Group, and, which is a franchise of Applebee's, and they don't mess around when it comes to that stuff. It's, you know.
So, do you think that this Board ought to revoke your license because of this?
I don't believe so.
I mean, there's zero tolerance. I mean, if we adhere to the same policy that you did to this employee, your license would be pulled. Is that fair?
No, I don't, I don't really see it as fair.
So, do you think it was fair to that employee who'd worked for you for a number of years and had one night where she was busy, and you threw her out without a job? Is that fair?
No, I don't really think it's fair, but like I say.
But that's what you did.
I know, because my hands were tied. I mean, they, you know, our franchise, you know, our franchise officers, we have to do what we're told, unfortunately, that's, you know.
So, that doesn't help her?
Oh, I realize that, you know, and I talked to her and I, you know, felt bad, and I told her, I explained to her that we would let her collect unemployment and be cooperative in that aspect, you know, I certainly felt bad.
Chief, isn't it true that the underlying purpose on these compliance checks are more educational than punitive?
Yes, that's what the AVCC are developing the standards.
And doesn't language to that regard go out to the license holders beforehand as part of the press release?
Yes.
Did you see that notice?
I did see the notice, yes.
So, wouldn't it make more sense to try to be educational with your employee rather than punitive?
Yeah, it would, and like I said, it's, we are educational with them. We, every September, we always recertify the entire staff with, you know, the responsible service of alcohol training program as well as the service safe alcohol training program. And we educate them and we give them the best tools and the ability to do their job. Was it a learning, you know, it was definitely something that she could've learned from. And like I say, I didn't, I didn't want to terminate her. I didn't want to terminate her, but it's an unfortunate thing, it's happened in a few other towns as well, and we have, we've let, you know, employees go, have been with us for some considerable amount of time. It's just, it's their policy and we have to go along with it.
Well, you know, typically, as Mr. DeBartlamayus had said, there is, you know, a letter of warning to a first-time offender. There is a policy before this Board that would make it a mandatory one-day license suspension on a first-time offense. You know, I've always viewed these things more as educational in theme with the intent behind these, as opposed to something that might be generated by a police investigation where they feel there's criminal activity going on. To me, I would view that much more harshly, but it is very, you know, distressing to hear that this employee who would work for you for a number of years, by whatever account, was a good employee, would lose her job over this incident, that really, Applebee's is not gonna have any penalty on it all. So, what kind of policy is that?
I, I don't know, I mean, I.
Is someone waving at me behind you?
Yeah, I just, I, I work with Phil, the area director, and it is.
What is your name?
My name is Alana Clancy.
And who do you work for?
I work for Apple American Group.
Okay.
I worked for Applebee's, the company, and Apple American Group bought us about 19 months ago.
Okay.
And they do have the zero tolerance policy. We all had to sign it, and all our employees had to sign it. And similar to you, you know, first time, you know, educational is definitely the route we would like to go. Unfortunately, we operate over 468 restaurants in their history, Apple American Group's history. If we did not react with zero tolerance termination of a staff member, that not, certainly not Milford, but other towns have reacted negatively to us for not, they felt we didn't take the matter seriously enough. So, it was probably over three years ago, at this point, they put the zero tolerance policy in effect, and we all signed it.
So, do you think that this Board ought to adopt a zero tolerance policy and revoke the license on a first-time offense on a compliance check?
Certainly a prerogative. I guess it's up for vote tonight, and I understand where you are coming from. We had always viewed them as an educational thing with Applebee's, and, you know, for, like you said, the first-time offense. It's a tough call, but when we haven't terminated someone in the past, then the town felt we didn't take it seriously enough, and so it turned into.
Well, that wasn't this town.
Absolutely not.
Because I don't think that this Applebee's has ever been before us.
We haven't, no, we haven't.
Not for something like this, no.
They adopted this policy, like I said, it was over three years ago, because they got some negative reaction from a couple, actually, it was a city that we operated in, for not, they didn't think we took it seriously enough.
I mean, to me, you know, it would make more sense to have a remedial plan for the employee.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, maybe a suspension, but, you know, there's, there could be some sort of remedial plan for the employee.
I don't disagree, sir, and that's how we used to operate with the new ownership. We have the zero tolerance policy in effect now. On a positive note, if there can be one found here, she did only work one night a week for us. She was just about completing her nursing degree, and she obviously is gonna get a good reference from Phil and myself, and she was, I think she's done in December with her nursing degree, so, not that that makes us any easier, obviously, she could've been a full-time employee just as easily. And we all, when Apple American Group bought us, we all had to sign this zero tolerance.
I mean, you know, personally, I mean, you know, I understand these things occur, and it's a compliance check, it's something that the Police Department does, I think, with the license holders throughout the town, to raise awareness, and to me, it ought not to be brought to the same level as an investigation where they have reasonable cause to believe criminal activity is occurring. So, given that, I would think that your company would respond accordingly, but to me, I think, you know, that is, is.
And sir, I would definitely, excuse me, but I would definitely pass that along, pass that along to, you know, the higher reps that are actually gonna be in town next week, and Phil and I are actually gonna be in a meeting with them, so we will tell them, you know, this town's failing on it.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, your company ought to look to differentiate in their policy a compliance check as opposed to an actual criminal investigation, and you might wanna take into account the employee's background and history. Now, if this individual has a history of things happening, absolutely, but if this is the first time something happened, that's awfully, you know, that's awfully harsh.
It's very harsh.
I agree.
It's very harsh. We agree.
Thank you.
Where exactly does that policy come from? So, where is that policy made? Where's corporate policy made?
Our corporate office is in Ohio, sir.
Okay, so corporate policy's made in Ohio, and I'm guessing your obligation as management as a franchise owner is to execute that policy?
Yes.
Yes, we agreed, we had to sign it, actually.
Whether or not you agree, because, you know, I too find it harsh that, you know, assuming for the sake of discussion that employee's record is immaculate and that there aren't any other ongoing issues, that there is an opportunity to do something, and hopefully, your corporate management will get that message. But having said that, I'll go to the members of the Board and see if there's a motion.
Chairman, I'd make a motion for a letter of reprimand in the file.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that, that motion has been made and seconded, it's unanimous, so consider this a warning and make sure you pass along to your employees not only the policy as it relates to the corporation, but also the obligations under the law and how serious this Board looks at potential violations.
I will.
I appreciate you coming here, and I appreciate your honesty this evening.
No problem, thank you very much.
And I'll pass along your thoughts, too, because we're with you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the chief again. We have a hearing for proposed new regulations as it relates to secondhand dealers in the meetings with the Chief of Police. And I'll let you.
When we last met, you know, I received comments from the Board, as well as there were some of the people here in the audience and spoke to me after the meeting concerning their particular business in town. As a result, I went back and took a look at the policy that was before you last and made some changes. First, we took out any reference to auctions, because it's generally people that are selling, you know, a whole household of furniture, or a business that is selling the furniture or other utilities or utensils in their business. We removed consignments, because consignments, they're not really buying or selling, they're selling for someone else. The person who owns the property is still the rightful owner. I segregated out secondhand dealers from the collectors of junk utilizing vehicles or other conveyances. The items that we wanna see record-keeping on and photographing are in Paragraph 4, so you're generally dealing with jewelry and things of that kind, so I segregated those as well. And they're primarily the items that we find are stolen and house breaks as well. The only items that are subject to a 30-day hold are the items 4A through D. So, again, you're dealing with precious metals. We find that, for instance, they'll buy a ring or a necklace and they melt the gold down. They're buying it more for the precious metal than they are for the particular item. Retentions of the records, so as not to place a great burden on the businesses, we reduce that from three years to one year. Then disqualification for licensee, it was in there as 15 years, I reduce that down to five, which is more consistent with what you find in statutes dealing with licensing. I removed the continue without a finding language, so it's either a conviction or not was the intent there. The secondhand businesses or collectors of junk are subject to administrative inspections by the Police Department, so in the statute, we have a right, and under these regulations, we have a right to go in and, you know, look at the property that they have on hold. Had in there that Milford Police Officer, pardon, excuse me, upon probable cause, had the legal authority to go in, you know, take the stolen property, to return it to its rightful owner. I took out the word "Milford" because any police officer in conducting an investigation has the authority to go in, say a Medway detective, and if there's property that was stolen in Medway, that officer has the right, as a matter of probable cause, to remove that item and return it to its rightful owner. So, those are the changes that were made to the policy, and if the Board has any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Chief, I'll go to the members. Do you know any questions or comments? And I'm sorry, I was remiss, I didn't also identify Detective Jay Ball, thank you, Detective, for being here.
Yeah, no, Phil, I just wanna say, Chief, thanks for, the last time you came in, the comments from the Board and also some of the statements from the audience, I think you were able to incorporate everything in here. Just one quick question, is this something that, sure, it happens every day, huh?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does, yes. I think, just off the top of my head, 99, 95% of the people that go in, a lot of people even come to me, are legitimate, but that 1%, 2%, you know, up to 5%, stolen goods are coming in, and just to regulate in our town, and like I said last time, to rename Oxbridge and Bellingham, they're actually looking to, I don't wanna say piggyback, but they're gonna probably take a peek at whatever may be approved by the Board to utilize in their town, because they're seeing an influx of people leaving, not coming to Milford and going to their towns.
You know, I suppose, is there a situation where people are stealing, like, in another community and coming here, or is it the same community here going to local?
No, it's, we see more people from outside the community. Most people that are from the Milford area know that we're gonna run to certain places right away. We do see a lot, and it's not just in the Blackstone and Metro West area, it's people from Brockton, down, people Rhode Island, people from other community come to our community.
And the, wow, I don't know, and the chances of apprehending these people, is, does it happen?
Yes, we've had great success. Yes.
Okay, no, nice job on this, Chief, thanks, Chief. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
Yes, Jay, good to see ya.
Good to see you, sir.
Chief, I think you did a nice job revising, or I guess streamlining, these regulations, and, you know, to me, the guts of it is at number four. You've really keyed in on the property that I think is gonna be focused around criminal behavior, and, you know, not the furniture salesman, you know, the kind of stuff where you, you know, clear out someone who's passed away, their home, and that sort of thing, but obviously, metals, jewelry, electronics, you know, those are the things that you're gonna be looking out for, those are the things that generate money, and I think these regulations go a long way towards, hopefully, making your job a little bit easier to do it. So, I think you did nice work on this.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, and just to be clear, you talked about some of it, but I wanna go over some of Section 4, just to review it. You talked about precious metals, gold, silver, platinum, copper, precious gems, watches and jewelry containing precious metals and precious gems, sterling silver flatware, electronic audio, video, photographic and optical equipment, power tools, usable instruments, cellular phones, electronic devices, television speakers, gaming devices, and collectibles, not limited to objects of art, furs, figurines, memorabilia, and antique objects. Before I come back to you, I just wanna see, because this is a hearing, what I'd like to do is go out to the public and see if there's anybody here that would like to comment on this particular topic. Anybody here has any comments? Okay. I'm hearing anyone, I'll go back to you, Chief. Is there anything else that you think is important with between what this does and what a dealer's obligation is to notify you?
I mean, this is gonna be, as Board members have mentioned, this is gonna be very helpful to us. We do get people, as Detective Ball indicated, that come from outside the community. We share, the information we get from the dealers, we share that with other detectives, just as they, the communities that have this type of regulation, they share, we get the sheets from their secondhand dealers as well. This has worked really well. Nathan has been doing it for over a year, he doesn't see it as a burden. He simply takes a picture of the person's ID alongside the items that they're selling to him, and from there, he uploads it electronically to Jay Ball. Jay ends up, you know, creating a book out of it, and we can share that with detectives, so Jay can email that out to other detective units, and then they apply it against, you know, their break-in and entrances and losses to see if any of the items are there. Medway was over just this past week recovering some stolen goods, so, you know, Dino mentioned, you know, do we go after them? We do. We'll charge that person for receiving stolen property, and not only because they had the stolen property and sold it, but also, we assist the secondhand dealers in getting restitution, so, because they're out the money that they paid for the stolen items, so we get it from the suspect through the courts.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll look to the Board now, is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
All right, a motion has been made, and to adopt the policy as you've rewritten it in this version, and I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Chief, I think you did a great job, I just wanted to, you know, commend you and Detective Jay Ball for your work in this space. Hopefully, it helps cut down and maybe move along folks that might otherwise wanna operate in town and maybe go to somewhere else that has an effective policies.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Next, we have a change of manager scheduled.
Come on.
So, I'll read from the application for change of manager. Milford Board of Selectmen will act on your application for the above referenced license at the meeting scheduled for Monday, October 28th, 2013, at 7:45. We're a little early, Room 3 of Town Hall. You're expected to be present, discuss the application with the members of the Board. If you're unable to attend in person, you're here now, so I don't need to go through that. Any outstanding local real estate, personal property taxes owed by the applicant, transfer property should be paid in full before the date referenced above. It's the responsibility of the applicant to remind all the parties of this obligation. You're required by state law to provide workers' compensation coverage. Your employees must have evidence of said coverage prior to your scheduled appointment. You know, before I go further, I wanna at least allow you the opportunity to introduce yourself to the members of the Board and the public.
Oh, Dana Larson.
Dana Larson.
From TD's Pub.
Good to see you, Dana. Next, one of the things we do is we go out to the various department heads to look for various information as changes happen or as people make application. Building Commissioner has noted that this is an existing non-conforming use. Town Planner has indicated that they're okay with it, there's no change. Tax Collector, at the time this was printed, indicated there was a total of $73.60 passed from FY 2013, and a sum of $55.11 personal property taxes from FY 14, which totals $128.71. Town Treasurer indicates there are no liens or outstanding liens. Fire Chief has no objections, and the Police Chief has no concerns at all. So, with that information, I'll go to the members of the Board and see if there's any questions or comments. Dean?
Mr. Larson, is this the, what was the name of this place before you, I don't wanna street? Is that the place on the left going up?
Yeah, it's been TD's Pub for approximately six years now. I know it's played as before that.
Oh, okay, yeah. And your experience in this type of business activity?
I've been running for about five, six years now.
Oh.
So, I went in with the O'Toole family from Hockton, and I used to own O'Toole's.
Oh, I see. Okay, gonna run it the same way, any changes expected? No?
Nothing at all, exact same way.
Oh. Yeah, we'd like to have those taxes cleared up, it's not much.
Mr. Chairman, he did pay those taxes today, I just wanna bring that to the Board's attention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Okay, that's all.
Brian?
No questions. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either, I'll accept a motion.
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, good luck.
That's the public hearings and scheduled appointments. Next, we have the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Valani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all can see, work on the reshoring of the Town Hall roof has begun. They worked Saturday and Sunday of this week, and they're making tremendous progress very quickly. The work is expected to be completed by November 8th, possibly sooner, weather permitting. The only thing we would like to say is that parking is gonna be limited somewhat while the work is ongoing, so we ask for the public's understanding and patience. All budgets under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen are on target, and also, as a result of the special town meeting action, I'm in the process of updating the capital projects list, and we've. projects list, and we will, as I think the chairman requested, present this to the board at a future meeting. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Dean?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
No, no questions.
Okay. Next, we have under old business, progressive discipline for certain liquor license violations. I don't know if there's any specific questions for you.
Yeah, that's a, the changes that made, we made as a result of the input from your board from the last meeting, so that should be, I think, precisely as you wanted it. It only affects the first offense, makes it clear that on the first offense, it's not less than a one-day suspension. Beyond that, it's a case-by-case analysis and then put the rest of the language effectuates.
Okay. Comments or questions by the board?
Yeah, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Brian?
No, I, you know, I think it's a well-written policy, that, you know, the policy makes sense, you know, as it flows through the sections. You know, personally, I'm not crazy about mandating a one-day license suspension on the compliance check situation, but, you know, the policy, you know, as presented is a good one.
Jerry, I don't, you know, this is the direction we pointed you in. I think Brian's comments are appropriate in terms of you provided that information. I don't have any questions, the way this is written. I'll look to the board for a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Not hearing a second, I'll second the motion. So all those in favor? All of those opposed? That's two in favor, one opposed. Thank you, Jerry. I think, do we have anything else for you?
I have nothing else to open session, no.
All right.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Get to the home and get.
All right, you get time.
Get ready for the game.
You've got time.
Get planted.
All right. Does anybody else have any old business for the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, I do not, thank you.
New business, we have a permit to obstruct written, it's a request made by the Milford Veterans Department by John Piller, and it's for the annual November 11 Veterans Parade.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that begins at 9:30 a.m., stop at Chalk Parking Lot, and starts at 10 o'clock, I'm sorry, starts at 10 o'clock. Participants are gathering at 9:30, and hopefully there'll be a lot of folks attending, especially considering the number of veterans we have and the number of people who are protecting our country and coming back not whole all the ways. Hopefully that will get a well, a good turnout. Next, we have Permanent Firefighters Association, the annual Santa Parade, a great event that the Milford Firefighters Association puts on. Again, it's another permit to obstruct because it's a parade, and the date is December 1st, 2013, starting at 4 o'clock.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, the Police Chief had sent out some feelers after some complaints associated with the parking along West Fountain Street, or is it Fountain Street? West Fountain Street near the high school, and so were complaints specific to the roadway being narrowed, safety concerns, and the passage of public safety vehicles might be impacted. The Police Chief sent out information and received feedback from Milford Town Engineer Bonnie Reese that she concurs, also Scott Christofouli, who also puts a note in here that he also agrees with the concerns associated with the narrowing of the roadway. I think the observation was made that the, by the person making the complaint, that there's been a great deal of parking space added to the high school, and I think it's been a matter of convenience over the years, and I think the request by the chief and others that agree to place no parking signs along the roadway from that parking lot to, I think, the town property, I'm sorry, the parcel property, 25 West Fountain. Any comments or questions? The chief's here, so.
Chief, this would be from the high school all the way down to the intersection?
The parking, it would be from where you turn in to the parking, to hit to the front door or over to the, there's some side parking right near the tennis court. So we started that driveway, and it would extend down to the first home on that side of West Fountain.
Oh, okay.
It's just basically in front of the field.
Yeah.
Usually we're pulling up on the sidewalk, and some cars walk on the sidewalk, other cars walk on the roadway.
The football field, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Right, comments, questions?
Yeah, I see the recommendation is for the no parking on the tennis court side. Is, are we going to have a problem with vehicles parking on the other side of the street? I mean, I see that as, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, you're going to go to the game, oh, I can't park there, well, I'll park over here, and now they're going to be parking in front of people's homes. I don't know. I mean, I suppose we could try this and see.
They were, Brian, they were parking on both sides.
I've seen it, you know, I've seen it, and, and I mean, in an odd way, it's really evidence of the success of the project, because now you have people going to the, to the field where they never went before, so, you know, it's not altogether a bad problem to have, and we can certainly correct it, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I guess we're going to be handling it on both sides.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm hopeful that people use the parking lot.
Sure, sure.
There's sufficient parking in there now. But if it becomes a problem, then I'll send another recommendation up to the board.
Yeah, so we can start with this, and, I mean, the only thing that we might want to do is pass on down to the highway surveyor, because in the winter, they will park the snow-removal vehicles in the parking lot in front of the softball field, and it takes up a number of spaces once the season starts and really reduces, you know, the parking, and I think exacerbates the problem, so if those vehicles could be placed somewhere else. Because, you know, come April, tennis starts, you know, track starts, and people are going to be going up there, but the vehicles, you know, they're there, you know, through March, April. But, yeah, no, this is fine, because there have been a lot of vehicles up there.
Oh, yeah.
No question about it.
Yeah, and, you know, I think this has been an ongoing issue for an awful lot of years, and I think, you know, the piece that was always troubling to me is that people have a tendency to walk in between vehicles.
Right.
And then walk out into the roadway to get into their vehicles. Sometimes people in a hurry to get going so that they're not caught in that rush. So this makes perfect sense to me, and, you know, the concern related to the other side of the road, I share, because, again, they've got a demonstrated ability, it's not imaginary, right, they've done it, to park on both sides of the road. So, you know, I, you know, I actually like the idea of trying something. If it needs to go further, appreciate it, and, you know, you get back to us, let's monitor it and see how it works. Is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous, to adopt the no parking signs in the areas that the chief identified in this message. Next, we have Zoning Board of Appeals, there are multiple applications we've received. Is the board had an opportunity to review these, and are they prepared to make a motion this evening to fill this vacancy?
Chairman, I'd make a motion for Charles D. Antonio.
I'll second that motion.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay? You know, and the only other thing I want to say is for members of the public that have put in applications to serve on these boards, like this case, there are capable people, and, you know, I just want to say that we appreciate each of the individual applications, you know, stay with it, because it's through the volunteerism of the community that this town runs so well, and through some of the elected and appointed officials as well, but we wouldn't be running without people continuing to submit applications and show interest in their government. Is there any other new business that the members would like to bring up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. You know, under our correspondence, we have unfortunately a vacancy in the Board of Registros as a result of the passing of Elizabeth Evans Riordan, and it's intended to fill an expired term that goes to 2014. We have a letter that was sent from the Board of Selectmen to Edward Bertorelli, Chairman, Republican Town Committee, asking that the Republican Town Committee submit names for filling this position. We received from Mr. Bertorelli a letter indicating that there was a town Republican Committee meeting, and that Edward Ross, John Edmondson, and Rosemary Belacqua were all submitted names that were approved and voted on by the Republican Town Committee. You know, just another comment along the same vein as the last comment, we're very fortunate to have people who are qualified and capable committed to the, to the town and the various boards. You know, for example, I happen to know or have met each of these individuals, and I think they're all very capable and highly qualified. We also have a letter from Amy Hennessy Nevs, the town clerk. She indicates that it's with sadness that she's submitting this request to the Board of Selectmen, and that the unfortunate passing of Elizabeth Evans Riordan caused this letter to be written. Board of Registros respectfully request the Board of Selectmen to seek list. Let's see. Let me just make sure I have this. And she had submitted another letter, I just want to make sure I have that copy, I'm sorry. Where she further states, I believe that appointing either Mr. Ross or Mrs. Belacqua would make sensible choice for the Board of Registros, she indicates that she has met John Edmondson on several occasions, but not had the pleasure to work with him. Due to the experience of the election workers, appreciate if you take current, their current previous work and election experience into consideration for our decision. Again, all qualified people, appreciate the, the number of people who've submitted their names and the consideration given here. Dean, is there any thoughts?
Like I said, I think that Ed Bertorelli has fulfilled his obligations as far as submitting three names to us. This has probably happened about five times over the past 15, 20 years. All good people, but I'd like to make a motion for Rosemary Belacqua, as it says, she served as the department clerk for 14 years, and also assistant town clerk for five years before she retired, and she continues to be an election worker. So I'd make a motion for Rosemary Belacqua.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, with that said, I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, can we make that complaint effective November 1st, just for the county?
Sure.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chairman.
So for clarity, is everybody okay with that and indicate so? You're okay? Okay, I'm also in favor of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence the board would like to?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Dean, Brian?
I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, there was just one item of correspondence this board received that I noted that came from Frank Saber, Milford Regional Hospital. We were CC'd on it, but it talks about the impact of potential casino going forward, and it just, it's a letter to Scott Butero of Foxwoods with concerns about the potential for the number of visitors that would be visiting the only hospital in the area, and Frank Saber indicates that they believe, the hospital believes that Foxwoods' projections have severely underestimated the number of people who might need hospitalization or hospital services, and he further notes in taking due account, talking to colleagues in Connecticut and other locations where casinos newly located in proximity to a hospital, those facilities did see over time an increase in volume, and specifically an increase in patients with alcohol and substance abuse issues, as well as patients with illness who tend to frequent casinos. So, again, I think this is part of the effort for the hospital to get the casino to look at their unique circumstance. It's different from those other casino applicants in Boston, we have, you know, 30 or so hospitals to go to. I'm hopeful that we'll see something positive from the casino in response to that letter. If there's not anything else, we do have executive session agenda. We'll be meeting with Police Chief regarding items within the Police Chief, Police Contract. We'll also be talking to Attorney Pat Nari regarding collective bargaining for Town Hall personnel and collective bargaining associated with the Milford Town Library.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, there's a motion?
Seconded.
All right. I also vote in favor, that's unanimous, now I'll go to roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote in favor, again, that's unanimous, that we will not be returning to open session following collective bargaining, executive session. Thank you very much, good evening.